Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone. Okay, well right now we just gonna let it go. Yeah, I'm just gonna let it run and... Yeah, because yeah, it has been raining so yeah, I'm just gonna leave it alone.
I'm sorry. And the time is 7:02 PM and this meeting has been called to order. So the item next up is the approval of the agenda. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been posted online in the clerk's office. I'm announcing one deferral from tonight's work session. Item six, sole source contract award for police vehicle will be taken up at a future meeting. So could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I, Commissioner Jennifer, move that we approve the agenda for Tuesday, Jan- July the 23rd, 2024.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Tillman, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. There are two items proposed for tonight's consent agenda. Item number two, approval of the minutes for June 6th and July 9th meetings. And then item three, contract extension treasurer. So has the commission had a chance to review the minutes and to review the contract?
Yes.
Yes. Are there any questions regarding the contract? Agreement?
I didn't have any.
So there are some alternatives. Did you get a chance to look at the last three alternatives? On page one of the item three. And so the purpose of the contract extensions to present the city commission with an extension to the current services agreement for treasurer alternatives. One, the commission, one, the commission could approve the transition plan with a hybrid service delivery model. The current contracted treasurer would provide continual and partial financial oversight of the city government pursuant to the requirements enumerated in the charter until the recruitment for permanent staff treasurer is completed. The commission, number two, the commission could maintain fully contracted service delivery. Number three is the commission could allow services agreement to lapse, name an acting treasurer, and proceed with the recruitment process. So are there any questions from the commission regarding these options?
I did have questions about this. So I wanted, David, if he could just kind of give us a recommendation, because I know we wanted, we talked about us bringing our own treasurer back in-house. And I wanted to like talk about how we would navigate that process in the interim. Because we didn't have an intention of staying permanently with Mr. Basilio. And it was a recommendation that we eventually bring that back. And you also suggested that we eventually bring that back for security measures and all of that. So if you could just kind of tell us how we would go about.
Absolutely. The treasurer is a vitally important role in overseeing the finances and internal controls for those finances in the city. What I would suggest is a soft transition away from the contracted services model wherein we hire financial staff and then go through a competitive recruitment process for a permanent treasurer. So we've initiated some work in that area already. The commission has been provided with a request for, to identify core competencies for a new permanent staff treasurer that will be incorporated into the job description, which will be then recirculated to the commission through HR and then advertised through both our normal channels and probably some extra normal channels, because we do want to generate a strong pool. The way that the contract services agreement has been amended in the item more or less takes us month to month. So we maintain continuity of oversight, can start to transition some staff in place, get them set up as staff while the commission refines what it wants to see in a new treasurer for district heights. So this is, as I said, a critically important position and the commission should, you know, have the opportunity to fully deliberate about what types of characteristics, skills, and attributes a permanent treasurer would have.
And are we looking for a treasurer, I'm sorry, Madam, ma'am?
No, go ahead.
And are we looking also for that treasurer to also incorporate both the responsibilities for timekeeping and the treasure, so we won't have those two separated duties?
Yes, that is part of the intention. So last year, we started to transfer some, but not all, of the payroll responsibility from our HR services partner to our treasurer services partner. As the treasurer function transfers back onto staff, more and more of those oversight roles will transfer back in-house. So they sit under one sort of umbrella. So it may not be the same individual person doing it, but they will sit under the same, you know, general oversight, if that makes sense. But as we transition, so this is a multi-month process. If we are really good at what we want to do with getting the job description put back together, getting it advertised, I would expect us to be making a complete transition sometime late fall.
And so the recommendation, from what I'm looking at, number one would be the?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns from the commission?
Me? Yeah.
Sure. Commissioner Tillman?
Yeah, I have to agree with the, with Commissioner Harcourt. I think we need to transition out from a, you know, contracted position and really have it in-house treasurer, because we're saving money. Right now, we're spending, you know, over a hundred thousand on just one person, really. So I would rather us, you know, kind of transfer that person out. So yeah, I totally agree with that.
Did she have a comment, Commissioner Jennifer?
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Because you've been working, you're working on this project here.
I've been working very closely with the city manager slash city clerk. And yes, I agree with my colleagues. I think that we have come a long way under the Basilio firm, but the intent has always been to have someone here in-house to be able to provide our financials here in-house. So we have discussed the contract and I think that it is, it's a pretty standard contract in that there's a year, but that contract can be terminated by either party, if I'm correct.
With thirty days notice.
Within thirty days.
Correct.
So we do have some, have some wiggle room there in terms of the contract.
And I would say the other terms of the contract in terms of deliverables, responsibilities, bonding requirements, all of that remains in place. We are simply doing slight modifications to those two pieces.
So the good thing is we're on, we're doing Paylocity, we're doing Bill.com, and we do have the new financial service through gen.gov to make that treasurer's life easier. So that's why we really feel comfortable about moving it in-house permanently. So if there aren't any other questions, could I get a motion to approve the alternative number one? On the contract extension number three?
I, Commissioner Jennifer, move that we move forward with the extension contracts with treasurer with option one.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Tillman, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you for that. So in the meantime, I want to move forward because I do see Chris Lawson, our human resources person in the back, employee benefits package briefing.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Colleagues and all those in attendance, I'm Chris Lawson from Human Resources. This is titled Final Employee Benefits Update. What we've determined is that, as you know, we presented this to you before, that we'll go ahead and match with kind of the federal government requirement in terms of timeline, making that October 1st. And wanted to make sure that we gave this final update now, because you have recess next month and we want to start rolling this out in August, mid-August. So, but this is just a current overview of benefits as well as new and additional benefits. You've heard me talking about single source carrier for a lot of the benefits that we currently have. So I just kind of mapped this out for you. We did look at multiple providers, as I mentioned before. We looked at the standard. We didn't have favorable consideration from The Guardian, but we did from MetLife, which is the selection that we've chosen to go with. So just, you know, real quick, in terms of current benefits, we currently use Lincoln Financial Life Insurance. It is a city-paid policy that provides life insurance at fifty thousand dollars for all full-time employees. We will put that under MetLife Insurance, which is pretty much a match for policy to policy.
Is this regular whole life or term?
These are term life policies. They cover the employees for the term of their employment. In terms of dental, we are currently using Dominion Dental, which we've gotten, you know, a number of concerns in terms of provider networks and volume of benefits. They provide a two thousand dollar annual maximum benefit as well as discount services and one examination per year. These are just the core benefits, you know, there's tons that go with these plans. I don't want to inundate you with all of that. I wanted to highlight the advantages.
Excuse me, I got some feedback because we have the fan on, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So MetLife would be the carrier as well for the dental portion. One of the reasons, again, this scenario I think works well, is pretty popular among small groups. We're considered, you know, we have fifty-two employees, but we're technically considered a small group and when you bundle, as they say, it's so popular now, that you will save, you know, from one policy type to the other, because you're putting all of your risk with one prominent insurance carrier. But one of the highlights is that, and I, you know, you see some items in bold, those are the differences. But MetLife, instead of two thousand, they'll provide two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty annual maximum benefit. They also provide discount services and two examinations per year. And they also have one of the largest, probably the second-largest dental provider network in the country. One of the things we've had some of the employees talk about was access to providers, their providers. MetLife has a ninety-six percentile match with most dentists in the DMV, basically. But it is a national program. They also have access to dentists outside of the network. So this would be an advantage. The pricing is competitive. David and I went through all of the pricing. In some instances, they're lower because of the bundling aspect. We are currently using Aflac Supplemental. They provide supplemental insurance plans, but the ones that we're using the most are accident, critical illness, and cancer protection. You'll notice my note says recommend keeping. I do recommend keeping this one for these particular lines of coverage, simply because we have employees that are currently using them. And at the point at which they won't be, then we could probably consider, you know, just isolating them all together. But I didn't want to recommend taking something away, particularly that they're paying for themselves. As well as those are three of the more popular supplemental plans being purchased anyway, accident, critical illness, and cancer protection. But MetLife also has a supplemental package that comes, a supplemental offering that comes in the package as well. It provides the supplemental insurance plans of life insurance, dependent life, so this gives employees an opportunity to ensure their dependents. Short and long-term disability, funeral discounts and planning services, grief counseling, will preparation, and MetLife Estate Resolution, which is along the lines of trust services that employees can use this to help them lay out their financial estate plan.
Is that additional cost for that?
Actually, it's.
Comes with the plan?
For the services where it says funeral discounts and planning services and all to follow, no, just as a part of it.
Okay.
It's a part of the benefit offering. So these are, you know, ancillary services. MetLife Vision, because we don't have a standalone vision plan now, we do have a vision rider within our medical plan, which isn't a part of this discussion. But MetLife also provides vision services at a ten-dollar copay per visit. They also have a number of discounted services for vision care, one of the largest networks nationwide as well. So I wanted to point that out. You also have MetLife Employee Assistance Plan. This is what they call work and life services consultation around childcare, elder care, and financial pre-retirement consultation, as well as employee and employer consultation on different work and life matters around employee assistance. I do know that the city manager has also outlined some employee assistance services that will kind of run alongside this. These are more internal services. He may want to provide an update at some point. And then the last benefit is our four fifty-seven deferred compensation savings plan, which is available to employees up to twenty-three thousand annually. That is the contribution maximum for 2024. Will probably go up in 2025, but we don't know. So they're able to do that now. Employer contributions are optional. But one of the issues that we have with this particular plan is that we don't have any current employees participating in it, but we're carrying this plan at a cost. It's not an extreme cost, but cost is cost. The other thing is that we tried to work with them in terms of coming on-site to help employees, but this particular package does. But this particular package does not offer, um, onsite support services or financial consultation. So, that's not doing us much good. We don't want to, uh, put, you know, a plan like this in front of employees and they don't have the knowledge
Right.
and understanding and financial guidance and advice they need. So, we are recommending, uh, John Hancock Retirement Services. Uh, they also provide a four-fifty-seven deferred compensation plan with the same, uh, rights and privileges to, uh, eligible employees, as well as employer contributions are optional, and they do provide onsite support services and financial consultation. Uh, John Hancock, John Hancock is known as the, um, largest mid-size retirement plan provider in the country and has a lot of success with groups our size. So, this is their sweet spot. And we'd be able to get a lot of, um, uh, financial assistance and advice from them as our providers. So, this is the new phase of, uh, employee benefits to, uh, help us conclude the year. And I suggest, um, this time next year or approaching this time next year, that we evaluate it, which we will, and we always do, just to kind of see how things are running. But the other thing too about the MetLife, uh, plans is that these are two-year rate guarantees that we were able to, uh, pull together. So, that is my final update. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the Commission?
I do.
Sure, Commissioner Jennifer.
Um...
Oops, sorry, Commissioner Jennifer.
That's okay. Um, I really like the, the MetLife plan. I currently have used them as my supplemental, um, plan. So, um, how did you go about, you know, researching the different plans and coming up with this as your best, as the best option?
Yeah, so we, as I mentioned, uh, there are several, um, options. Um, have a lot of knowledge as to what fits into certain, uh, market segments. And the three that you really want to pay attention to are the standards, especially for municipalities. They have a very strong reputation, MetLife, and The Guardian, and The Hartford. The Guardian would have honestly, I thought, been a better choice for us. But because we're a municipality, they have some different, uh, rating methodology that wasn't favorable. So, we took them out. And then The Hartford could not produce things like vision plans, dental plans. They could do life insurance, short-term disability, uh, whole life, long-term disability. So, that kind of separated them from the field. So, it really came down to the standard and MetLife as our final two choices. And MetLife price-wise, network-wise, uh, just pretty much everything you've seen here had an advantage. And then again, the standards, um, dental plan, even though they have a dental plan, and we haven't had anyone that we know that has problems with it, but it, it's, it's new in the sense of it's about five years old. So, I personally felt that this was a safer option.
Um, one other question. Uh, so these are, I consider them supplemental plans. Are we also looking at a, the top-of-the-umbrella plan for employees as well?
Health insurance?
Yes.
So, we're in, we're just starting year two of health insurance with our current provider. We did a kind of a late, late first-year
Yeah.
review of the coverages as well as a staff survey. We've gone back to the provider and tweaked a couple of things. And so, where we are right now is a look and see for, um, how we proceed in years two and three, in which case we would bring it back to the Commission. This is also ones that did that at similar or lower cost. What kind of goes unsaid with this is that the Commission also has the opportunity with this on the table to explore questions like, well, we have this Mission Square system. People aren't really using it that much. We could transfer to another one. Maybe that would bump usage up. Do, do we want to consider something like a percentage-based employer match? Is that something that you want to look at? That's something that the city hasn't historically done, but is common in the industry. Uh, and you can also, if it's the Commission's pleasure, uh, work around the margins to tweak the amount of coverage. And so, what this proposes is kind of a, a like-for-like or like-for-slight improvement plus EAP. But you do have the opportunity to take a deeper dive.
Yeah.
And so, what we could do with that, um, is, you know, based off of your feedback tonight, either put the final numbers together for the Commission for final approval with this plan or this kind of trajectory, or we could do that with an analysis of other practices, or we could do something completely different. So, what we're trying to do is tee up the public side of the conversation for how you deal with this side of being an employer.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, first, first, I'd like to piggyback on, um, Commissioner Jennifer. I've been with MetLife for years. I love them. Um, so, thank you. They are really, really good.
Okay.
I've never had a bill. They do what they say they're gonna do. Um, and I just signed up with their legal, uh, MetLife Legal, so I'm, I'm very comfortable with them. So, that's a great deal. My question is about the Mission Square and the John Hancock Retirement Services. And I'm wondering if they offer a Roth component?
Yes.
They do?
Yes.
Okay, and that, that will be made available to the staff as well?
Yes. Before we, uh, make any transition, there's gonna be, uh, what they call a summary plan description.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm gonna need to ask you yes and no's.
Okay.
Roth IRA is one of those components. Do you want to match or not? Do you want to make a discretionary or not, et cetera, et cetera? Do you want, do you want to offer all one thousand investment options, or do you want to narrow it down to just a few? Um, and I need to highlight that because you take on some of the fiduciary responsibility of the investments. But the other good thing about John Hancock Retirement Services is that, is that they operate with a warranty. So, they have fund managers that do it all for you. So, should something go, you know, and disarray, uh, that's your, that's your layer of protection. There are others that do it that way as well, but at a premium that I don't think I want to, you know, bring here. We're not that size for that type of provider.
Right. But we could, we could get with a, with a fund like Vanguard or?
You will have access to Vanguard funds.
Okay.
You'll pretty much have access to most every mutual fund.
Okay.
Uh, there's gonna be bonds, and you'll make the decision along, uh, with us as to whether or not you want to keep bonds in there, real estate investment trust components, mutual funds, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
But there are many, uh, to choose from.
If I may, Madam Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
What Mr. Lawson said, I just want to draw an underline under is, uh, you know, if we're looking at that supplemental retirement, you really can go down the rabbit hole in terms of options and contributions and types of fund availabilities and target funds versus mutual funds versus, you know, everything else. And so, you know, it would be helpful tonight if we could get some feedback, e- even if it's just at a high level, for the type of benefit or the type of options that the Commission desires to entertain, because then what we'll do is go back, do some work, pull the numbers together, basically start opting in and out, and present the final picture to you.
Usually, I...
So, um, for the Mission Square one, how long have we had this retirement?
I honestly don't know the, um, timeframe, but I, but I know you've had it for a minimum of eight years.
Oh, okay. So, um, who actually has benefited from it or participated?
Just, um, just in the past two, this is two years now. The past two years that I've been here, we don't have, or we've, we've only had one, one employee that's been here within the past two years. And then all of the other employees have, have left the city.
So, they've retired or?
And these were, some of them in the plan, um, are retirees.
Okay.
Yeah. Some of them were employees that were here and no longer here for whatever reason. But a big, but a big portion of the assets are retirees, past retirees.
Past retirees.
In the interest for disclosure for the Commission, I'm the one employee who recently opted in to that. And so, just to throw that out on the table.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, on the, so we have, currently we have Dominion Dental.
Yes.
And so, that it, so that, um, so that one is not really useful for the employees?
It could be better.
It could be better. So, that's why we were looking at MetLife Dental. Okay.
And again, you know, we, we had a lot, there, there were some other, uh, plans that really weren't worthy of discussion, in my opinion. And we need to figure out how to just move those contracts, you know, off our books. There's no one doing anything with them. And we were trying to, you know, get this down to like two, two providers, three at the most.
Right.
Right now, we were looking at maybe like as many as five.
Oh, okay.
So, that was one of the reasons as well.
Okay. Now, for the life insurance, term life is what we're offering.
Yes.
Um, so, what's the difference? Because you're still saying fifty thousand. Or MetLife, is MetLife giving us more benefits for this term life?
Yeah, so, um, they're giving the employees access to additional coverage should they want it.
Okay.
So, so some employees have said, can I increase my, uh, policy value from fifty thousand to a hundred? We don't have that component. But MetLife, we do. We would just price it for them. They agree to it, sign up, and that's pretty much it, do a payroll deduction.
Okay.
So, they're making more available as well as the, uh, dependent life for children and spouses
Okay.
would be available to them as well.
Okay. Um, and so, we did not offer, uh, vision at all as a supplement?
Yeah, we didn't, we don't have a standalone vision plan.
Okay.
Um, I think we, um, relied on the medical plan, which has a vision component.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we need to have additionally a standalone vision, because some people don't participate on the medical and so forth.
Okay. So, what are we doing today? Are we just asking about the, um, retirement, giving us more options, or are we just looking at, um...
We're, we're treating this as a, as a check-in before we go into recess.
Okay.
Because as Mr. Lawson pointed out, there are, there is some work that, well, he's gonna have to, have to do over recess.
Okay.
Um, and we need to get a sense of, you know, what the, the feeling or the trajectory of the Commission is before we start that work and bring back the final products for you to say yea or nay on in September, so that we can proceed into the October, um, aligned enrollment period.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Yep, thank you, David.
So, how does the Commission feel about that?
I mean, so far, I mean,
Sure.
so far as the supplemental, I, I think these are, uh, good.
Okay.
Um, this is a good addition to supplement what we have
Yes.
with the health insurance. I think this will be good to fill in, um, with, uh, with the Kaiser that they have. I think this will probably help get them through the remainder of that contract. Um, so far as with, uh, the retirement, I, I do think it would be wise for us to probably offer a match. If we can do some research to see, like, what other municipalities are doing.
I can tell you that answer, so.
Yeah, I can, I can help you with that pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what are they doing?
Um, it's a variety. Um, but, you know, there are a number that are participating. And we're not talking about the state pension plan
Right.
because that's an automatic rule.
That's automatic.
Decided to do that. Many of them are doing that.
Right.
And, um...
Which most, a lot of people are not offering a pension at all, so.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that's, that's truly valuable. But then you have some employees who, you know, like David, like he was saying, who want to do more, and you really should have a VeeHill for them to do that.
I think that's important, having that option.
Mm-hmm. For competitive reasons too, because you'll have some employees, you know, with all of recruiting. I've even had employees that ask, you know, we have a four, that we have an additional, uh, savings, uh, option. And we do, but this is just one that we can better control, better, um, assist and service the employees, um, as well.
Yeah.
And like David said, you know, when we talk about a, a match or a discretionary match, it would be up to you all.
Yeah.
If I may.
And I usually think the average is, what, like, two and a half to four percent, something like that?
Yeah, that's, that's probably what the average would bear out. The reason we're asking that question is because as Mr. Lawson said at the beginning of the presentation, we have really low active employee participation rates.
Mm-hmm.
What that tells us is that either they know about the plans and are not incentivized to save, or they don't know about the plans or are not getting, you know, the products that they want out of the plans. And so, that's why we're, we're posing the match question. Um, obviously, any match that comes back is a policy that is set by the Commission and then would get built into the plan by HR.
And additionally, if I could, shoot. Um, I think it would also be, also education.
Mm-hmm.
Um, these things can be overwhelming. Uh, and so, I think it would probably be good to narrow these down to some targeted, uh, investment vehicles. Um, like, I know in, with the TSP, they have like a few funds that are targeted like twenty-thirty, five, twenty-forty, twenty-fifty.
Right.
Uh, and they have some where you can kind of manage your own. And if we could also get them to tell us like the percentage, how much they'll cost us to manage these, those fees can actually nip away at their, um, at their money. And so, we don't want to have them, or even us, invested in those monies. And then the, the, the fees, that one percent management fees. You think that's not a lot.
It is.
And it adds up to being a lot of money.
Yeah.
You know?
But I think the educational piece is important. And in this day and time, nobody's really talking about retirement or making that disciplined
Yeah.
payment over retirement.
Right.
So, um, I'd like to be able to offer that piece to the employees, so they can start thinking about it, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
Because, because, you know, people think social security is gonna pay all the bills and (laugh) that really doesn't happen. So, you have to create another source of income.
It's true. And the sooner people understand compound interest
Right.
that the sooner you start, the earlier you start.
Yes.
The older you get, the less you actually have to put in. When you start in your twenties, you can kind of stop in your thirties and you can relax, as opposed to start in your forties.
Right.
And then it's a hole, you know?
Yeah.
And scary, so.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, I think this would be some good options.
It's a great point, a great point. So, um, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So, just to kind of recap for myself, like David said, this was, you know, a, a last show to kind of get a feel for, and your feedback's been great, um, for what you think and, you know, how you feel about, you know, this lineup, so that we can go from here to put together, when you get back, I'll have for you like comparative pricing even. Um, and as well as a breakdown based on the percentage that you're currently paying, what it looks like in the new, uh, package, et cetera, et cetera. And as it relates to the, uh, retirement plan, um, John Hancock does have, um, advisors that are assigned to us that can, I would suggest, you know, given what you said, Commissioner, is to have a session where we're actually looking at all those funds, because it is, it is mind-boggling. Um, one of my, you know, mentors always, always says, give them, give them the whole thing, because then you don't have any issue with what they have or don't have. And let it play out and see where people, what people choose, what people, because you probably have some employees that have financial advisors or savvy themselves or feel their savvy and so on and so forth. Let it play out, see, see what, see what it looks like, and then you can kind of, uh, design from there moving forward. Because you can make quarterly and biannual, um, investment plan changes if you so choose, as we set it up. So, I'll have all of that available to you for our next, uh, discussion.
Okay, so, um, you'll have that ready for us, okay?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome, thank you.
So, still don't see Bradley, um, so we have Nicole Jackson, Sustainable Committee, you wanted to report out. David, David.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, while David's doing that, so good evening, Mayor Commission, good evening, residents. Um, thanks for the opportunity, ideally, this is a little late. Um, I wanted to give a report on the first year of, uh, the activities of the Sustainability Committee. So I will include the first year up until now, in addition to share what we have, uh, in store moving forward. So, this is our update, so, for our new residents here, we hope that you come out and, and join us, because we are getting ready to explore a, um, extensive recruiting campaign, we need more hands, many hands make polite work. So, the vision of the Sustainability Committee is to educate, inspire, and empower our residents to adopt environmentally sustainable practices, inspire and work with the mayor and commission of the city to also adopt sustainability practices within its operations. That's our vision, our mission for, uh, the Sustainability Committee is to promote environmental sustainability, provide education, do community outreach and engagement, and this last year, we have focused a lot on, uh, educating and community engagement with our residents, and we also want to advocate and promote for environmental and climate justice, as specifically as it relates to health disparities in our communities, Black communities. So for twenty twenty-three, I'll be brief, um, twenty twenty-three, we embarked on, of course, Earth Day cleanups, what we all do. We had about eight volunteers come out, so our hope is that each activity, we will grow. We engaged, uh, with the community, we had a community, um, conversation surrounding the access of healthy foods, which, um, Mayor Miller, Commissioner Harcourt, um, I think all of our commissioners were, were in attendance that evening, and we had about twenty-five residents come out, and what we did was talked about what healthy food access means and looks like for our city, what it is that we wanna see moving forward, and we came up with several definitions related to healthy food access, and whether they were in a cultural context or historically relevant cultural context. So looking at things that a lot of people in the Black community like to, to do, like talk about little recipes, if we think about Thanksgiving or Christmas, we have a lot of foods that, they're good foods, but we don't necessarily prepare them in a, in a sustainable or healthy manner. So we looked at those act, those types of activities. That conversation then informed what we had over the weekend, uh, was called a community walk audit. And the purpose of the community walk audit was to assess our access to healthy food outlets, where we can access healthy food either by walking, biking, taking a scooter, any alternative means other than using a vehicle within fifteen minutes of leaving our home, right? So if we know anything about our community, we have an Aldi, we now have a Lidl. Um, those stores are relatively close, but we also heard from residents that participated in the walk audit that we would like better quality, um, access to healthy food, so a lot of people mentioned wanting to have access to a farmer's market, wanting to have access to, uh, more opening of the community garden, which, and Ms. Terry's not here, I'm so excited, um, about the expansion of the community garden that they are partaking on. So that was the purpose of the walk audit, and to assess the, the city infrastructure. So we looked at things like sidewalks, whether there are lack of sidewalks, whether there are sidewalks that don't continue or sidewalks that are, that may be or may not be tripping hazards. We looked at the streetlights, we looked at how enjoyable our walk is, so ramping up our city's tree canopy, because often spaces where we would walk, even if it was hot, we didn't have shaded, uh, walkways to be able to have an enjoyable walk. So those were some of the things that we did for twenty twenty-three. I mentioned our, uh, community walk audit, I have a small video here, healthy foods access, and it'll give you guys a highlight of what the community conversation was like in addition to the walk audit. Back, uh, two slides, David, one more, back one more. Yep, that one. Yes, that's a, uh, link down in there, if you look in the notes, I put the link in there for you, yeah. I think that's the wrong link, but I'm definitely gonna share that video as well.
Okay, is that it?
I didn't, it is... Did you grab the wrong, the wrong link, David? There, yeah, that one right there. Oh, I'm sorry, go back, go back a slide. There it is. And also for the community, um, conversation, we were honored to be able to have our local councilwoman for District Seven, Crystal Oriata, we even had one of our state delegates send a representative from his office, so we were very excited about their participation in the conversation and the walk audit, because one of the things that they said that they would do is take things back to their constituents on a larger level and be able to share and inform, uh, those types of conversations in other districts.
So we had a slight issue with the audio not broadcasting through the ClickShare system.
I see that.
I can play the audio locally so that the room can hear it for the next video.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, yeah, it's only, I think it's two minutes. But it's the slide before this one. And to save time, we can skip the next one. So that was just a, a brief recap, recapping what some of the things I already shared with you guys. Um, and we have recently, actually just before I drove here today, we got an updated, uh, thorough, in-depth report from our partners who helped us do that, uh, the Capital Market and Neighborhood Design Center, and we will be scheduling, uh, an update conversation in August to share those results and findings with the community.
Okay.
Um, if we move into twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, we have been, uh, really busy as well. So twenty twenty-four, we have had, um, invasive plant removals, we've had a community cleanup, we've had a climate stories workshop that I was really excited about, uh, because we had about thirty-five attendees, but from nine different countries, we did it virtually as part of climate education, we, and I was actually surprised to see other folks hop on there with us. During that workshop, we talked about a brief, um, introduction to climate change, we talked about using our stories, helping individuals craft their own stories around climate change, and using our stories to advocate for ourselves and our communities. And we talked about looking at climate change from a trauma-informed method, because when we talk to younger generations, there's research that shows that younger generations are really affected, uh, mentally, um, by climate change, via depression, clinical depression, sadness, anxiety. So there are lots of those types of things, so we, part of the workshop also touched on, uh, advocating and speaking about climate change using trauma-informed methods as well. Uh, we did a residential tree planting this year with one of our partners, Joe's Greenworks. We planted thirty-seven trees, uh, with between twenty-one, uh, homes here in the city, and we followed up between, uh, one of our twenty twenty-three activities called Listen, Lead, Share. Listen, Lead, Share was a series of educational workshops that educated, um, any, any members, but really open to, uh, the folks here in District Heights. We talked about health disparities related to climate change, so asthma, which is a big thing here, uh, obesity, um, excuse me, and other things of that nature, we talked about healthy homes, we talked about the green economy, actually, so finding jobs within the, the green and circular economy that specifically we want our people to be able to take advantage of. And Phase Two of that, we did this year, we did it, um, last month, actually, and what we did was provided an update, um, on those conversations, because part of the conversations that we had here in District Heights, other communities around the state also had them, and we did them in partnership with the Maryland Environmental Justice Collaborative, in addition to the NAACP Maryland State Conference. So this, the Phase Two, the update for Phase Two, was to take all of that information that was gathered from the residents here in District Heights and the residents all over the state to see what the common themes were, and then Maryland Environmental Justice Collaborative came back to us and said, these, these were our findings, and a lot of them were similar, especially in Black and Brown communities. And some of the, the highlights that we found is that our people, we want to move into living a more sustainable, healthy life, but we are put off by the cost of a lot of things. So when we think about environmental justice, those are some of the things that we want to advocate for. Prince George's County specifically had an environmental justice commission, and I don't, I know I may get on some people's nerves there, but they had an environmental justice commission that put out a report with all of these recommendations to implement in Prince George's County, and then when we implemented the climate action plan for the county, a lot of those things were missing. So one of the things that I have been doing, and I hope that all of us can do, is advocate for our communities and other communities like ours within the county, because we don't wanna be left behind with the transition to, uh, a more sustainable future. So that is what the Maryland Environmental Justice Collaborative Partnership is doing for us, so there will be a Phase Three for that report, and it will come back later, and a report is gonna be put out by Progressive Maryland that will also take the findings from the communities around the state to be able to inform and advocate different policies, uh, for the next Maryland State, uh, General Assembly Session. So what's next? Oh, Lord, that's a big list. Um, so we have, uh, I mentioned the community walk audit findings we're gonna do, we're gonna do a community storytelling ambassador series, which would be, um, an alternative to the storytelling workshop that we did in April, where we will take individuals from the community, train individuals in interview techniques and about climate change, to teach people to go out within our communities to gather other people's stories for climate change stories. And the purpose of that is, when we are sharing our stories, we are able to take those stories communautatively and find things in, that we have in common to, to, to determine what we need to advocate for. Um, and we just happen to be very lucky to have a mayor and commission that is on board with a lot of the things that we want to do, because I can tell you that, um, a lot of the municipalities, we have twenty-three here in Prince, twenty-three, right?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven here in Prince George's County, and I can tell, I can probably name maybe six that are very progressive in terms of moving forward with, um, environmental initiatives. So that's one of the things we wanna do, in twenty twenty-three, we also had an event called Power in the Park, which we wanna do again this year, we have some lessons learned from Power in the Park last year. Last year, we did it in the fall, which we intend to do again this year, we had about a hundred and twenty people sign up. The lesson learned is that we did not say on the flyer that due to rainy day, it would be inside, so we had less than half, uh, attendees show up. However, the good feedback that we had from that is that all of our vendors and suppliers that participated in that, they enjoyed the time of year, they enjoyed that it was inside, and they enjoyed being in one location that wasn't so large, where community members can come and speak with them. And to give you a better understanding of what Power in the Park is all about, the intention of Power in the Park is to bring resources together from the county and from the state to provide, uh, resources for community members to reduce our energy bills. So if you wanna sign up for an energy program, they'll give you the information about that, help you sign up on the spot. If you've already signed up for a program, they can give you updates about where you are in that process. So we'll plan to do that again this year. Um, we are also working on a sustainable energy workforce development program with, uh, Prince George's Community College. Excuse me, Prince George's Community College, and that's in the early phases. Thank you.
So would you, so would you be able to come back and kind of talk about the next steps a little bit more?
For the sustainable, oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, so we kind of like on a time constraint right now.
Oh, okay, yeah, so, if I'll just move along through that, so we, and I'll tell you, because we'll move along to the partnerships and then we'll end, um, yeah, I can come back and talk about that. Uh, one of the big things I did wanna share though is with the new partner, we're working to do, uh, community air quality monitoring. So I'm hoping to get either free air quality monitors or reduced-cost air quality monitors, um, from one of our partners to be able to do that here in the city, and our community partners that we have worked with last year and this year, uh, the Maryland State Conference Environmental- State Conference Environmental Climate Justice Committee of the NAACP, those are some big ones. That was a really big one because they partnered with us on a lot of activities and brought almost about $26,000 worth of services to us that we did not have to pay for out of any of the city's budget.
That's great.
Very, very limited. In addition to the partnership with Joe's Greenworks, Joe's provided all of the trees to the community members. We didn't have to come out of pocket with anything. They provided all of the education about the maintenance and things of that nature. And the new partnerships we're working on is one with Prince George's County Public Schools that'll be happening this fall, actually, well, so there are two. That one will be happening this fall, and it will be a training for climate change for high school students. So we'll do that in conjunction with Prince George's County Public Schools and our neighborhood partner Bishop McNamara High School here. And what was it, the community garden, we're going to do a community gardener, garden with District Heights Elementary School.
Yes.
So that's a lot. We've done a lot. So we need y'all's help. We need members.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
And then what about the, the Green, the Green Works Workshop that I attended to talk about?
Which one?
The one downtown with...
Oh, that's right. So that was the U.S. Green Building Council Government Summit.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, yes, yes. So we partnered with them this year. They brought Mayor Miller out to talk about all the wonderful things that we are doing here in the city of District Heights. And those of you that don't know, U.S. Green Building Council is responsible for the LEED Rating System, which stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. And it's a rating system to basically tell you how green your buildings are. So one of the things I'm working on is to try and get the city in their next cohort of LEED for Cities Program because it's free, y'all. Anything free y'all want for the city?
Yes.
So, yeah.
Well, thank you so much for the call. And we look forward to regular updates to keep us informed and to get those volunteers.
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Before you go, can you just put on record how people can contact you if they want to volunteer?
Yes, thank you for that. We have an email with the city. It's greenteam@districtheights.org. Yep. Thank y'all.
Okay. So you're going to, you're going to have a table at National Night Out?
I have to not plan a lot because I don't have time.
Okay, okay. Maybe by that time, you'll have some volunteers that want to come out. Okay. We could put that out there, too. Thank you so much. So we're going to be going into closed session, but before we do that, do we have any public participation? I don't want people waiting while we're, David. Do we have any public participation?
There were two members who, members of the public who wanted to speak, but they did not sign up on items on the agenda. So just for the public's benefit, the rules are flexible for city meetings where essentially all of the departments are on the agenda and therefore everything is free game for public comment. Work sessions are a little bit more constrained and the rules state that essentially members of the public that wish to comment need to sign up to comment on an item on the agenda before the commission.
Okay, so we did not receive any items to be discussed that's on the agenda. Okay.
Mayor, should I just have a question? Mr. Street, when you say the rules, just for clarity for the public, what, what rules?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Jennifer.
So just repeat what you just said.
That is the city commission's rules of procedure. The city commission's rules of procedure define in pretty exacting detail the procedures of the commission relative to open meetings, public input, order of the agenda, how motions are entertained and accepted, et cetera. And so as, as I think you or another commissioner highlighted a moment ago, over the last month or so, I've been absorbing some clerk-related duties as we kick off our surge, which means that I have had to take charge of taking advance signups and making sure that the rules of the commission, as adopted by the commission in open meeting, are adhered to. And so there are several discrete rules about how public comment is taken, when it's taken, and at which meetings it can be taken at. As I said, in just the, the rules state that for regular meetings of the commission, i.e. city meetings, public comment on basically any topic for city businesses, fair game for work sessions, and the item for comment needs to be an item on the agenda. So for example, an individual tonight could sign up to speak on the ethics ordinances before the agenda or the amendments to the rental licensing procedures that are on the agenda.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So do we want to do the ethics ordinance before we go into, okay, Bradley Farrar? So that's item four. Would you be doing item five as well?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. For the record, I am Bradley Farrar, City Attorney for the city of District Heights. You provided the commission draft number two of the proposed amendments, additions, and revisions to the city's ethics ordinance. In it, we are correcting a number of issues as it relates to some items that were omitted from the ethics ordinance that were passed by the state, state of Maryland, and it brings us in conformance with that. In addition to that, we are also addressing some, some issues that are experientially we've run into. So it clarifies some, some ethical gray areas and ambiguity. As it relates to any substantive changes from draft one to draft two, if you have any questions about that, I think I probably should address that first. If you would turn your attention to page 10 of draft two. What we did was, and this is really the only change in draft one to draft two, there we added in what we are now adding a new section to 147, which prohibits retaliation. And so we've added language, or we, actually, what I did was I broke out and I delineated the language and added paragraphs C and D, which extends the protections of the ethics ordinance, and particularly this particular section prohibiting retaliation, to any individual who provides information, testifies, assists, or participates in any manner in an investigation proceeding or hearing under this ethics ordinance. And then in that subsection D, what we did is we put a penalty section in, or we clarified the penalty section, and we referred to sections 1-7, 1-8, and 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of District Heights, which allows the Ethics Commission to impose monetary fines against persons who are found to have violated the ethics ordinance. I did have an opportunity to meet with the Ethics Committee this morning to the late or early afternoon, and there were no comments or any opposition as it relates to this, these amendments to the ethics ordinance.
Okay.
So with that, I know we're pressed for time with that. I stand to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Any question, any questions from the commission?
Don't he answer mine?
Yeah. Okay. Is there a motion on that? So could I get a motion on the amendments for the ethics ordinances? Could I get a motion?
I'll take that, Mayor. I, Commissioner Jennifer, moved that the city commission forward ordinance number DH 2024-04 Ethics Ordinance as amended and provided in attachment one to the July 23rd. No, is that right?
No.
That's not the right one.
Mm-hmm.
Not, yes, it is? It has today's date, though. Okay, all right. Continuing in attachment one to the July 23rd, 2024 staff report to the September 5th city meeting for action.
Could I get a second?
Vice Mayor Harcourt, I'm sorry, Commissioner Harcourt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero, because you met with them today, right?
Yes.
So that's today's date.
We met, we met, and they didn't have any questions. They were, their, their question was to the difference between draft, draft one and draft two.
Draft two.
And again, we defined what retaliation looks like. So the state required an anti-retaliation ordinance, and they gave some model language, but they didn't really define what retaliation looks like. So what we've done is we've done more than the state requires. We've defined what retaliation is. We've expanded protections to not just employees, but also any individual who participates in, in the protection and advancement of this ethics ordinance. And then we've also established financial penalties, which is, you know, far beyond what the state would require. So we're, we're doing more than the state requires, much more.
Okay, you want to go in, right into item five, repeal and react.
Sure. It's a couple of things on that. We, we provided the, the city with, just bear with me if I can pull this up. So we provided a draft with regard to the repeal and reactment of section 1031 of the city's ordinance regarding rental, rental licenses. Among, among all the other things, this, this particular draft has some language for additional requirements. We, I did receive some additional comments over the past couple of days or so that there would need to, that we may need to enhance this. We need to probably put some, some parking requirements in, in here as well as some, some monitoring, monitoring of security camera requirements in, in the, in the legislation. So what I think we could do is we can, we could probably, you know, take this under advisement. I don't know if we necessarily need to do anything at this particular meeting. We can take it under advisement if, if it's the commission's desire.
Sure.
I'm sorry, Dick, go ahead.
So, so, you know, one of the things that the commission asked for when we first proposed the ordinance for introduction is basically, you know, in addition to some of the basics that we've got in place, what else could we conceivably include in our ordinance to try and encourage or compel certain security activities in multifamily units? Right? And so what we've got pulled together is essentially in the body of the item, so starting on page one and continuing on to page two, some additional considerations that you could make, whether it be more specific lighting requirements, or surveillance requirements, or onsite security requirements, or access control requirements, et cetera. You can also, you know, include things like real-time monitoring of video or CCTV and things like that. You have a lot of leeway to craft residential licensing requirements such that the business actions by the property owner in, excuse me, foster a safe and secure environment for tenants and residents. And so, you know, what this is, is really additional content for you to consider and chew on as the item is forwarded to the next set of meetings for consideration and adoption, if that's helpful. And, you know, if you have specific items that you want to see in there, that's certainly something that we can work in and provide language for. This is language that aligns with some things other jurisdictions are doing, or things that are being tossed around for proposal at the state level.
Okay.
I did have a...
Sure.
I know Chief Tarpli and I, we have been talking about some, some other things that we can help come up with to bring down this crime. And we've talked with Michelle about this several times, and it's really a low-cost thing that they could do, which is just to simply implement parking passes for residents. So that, that would really help the police and to give us a little bit more leeway on, like when we had the problem with the squatters and the townhouses where they gave us a MOU where we could actually, our police department could go and tow. They could give us some, some more authority on that if they gave us parking passes. So is that something that we could include in this or a part of their...
Yeah, there's a couple of considerations for it. So you could, I think, compel something like that. You could also probably compel a certain number of spaces per unit, right? So it's basically assigned parking. You could also, on the other end, if you're not getting traction from a specific property owner, create a residential parking district that affects the same thing. Right? And so there's a couple of different ways to crack that proverbial nut.
Right, because one of the problems that we've been having with them is, and a lot of residents have been telling me that some of the issues is that residents have been subletting. And the way that we can get around that is if we attach automobiles...
Yep.
...with a license plate to that unit, then they can't sublet to a unit and have a car that's not there because that car will be towed. So there are ways around there. If that car's not on there after, after a certain time, that car's going to be towed. And they have to be associated with the leaseholder or the people that live in that unit. And so, and so Michelle, her pushback was, well, we'll have to charge them. I'm like, no, you don't. You just have to issue parking passes, you know?
Correct. And so what I would add, too, is that it's not necessarily for one unit. It would be applicable for all residential, you know, units of a certain density that are in the city and come into the city in the future.
Exactly.
And so I think, you know, what we're asking for in this respect is which model do you want to go on? Do you want to essentially rely on whichever management entity to administer the program, implement the program, and enforce it? You know, or do you want to explore us doing it through codifying a parking district?
Right. So Chief Tarpli, do you want to comment on this? Do you want to come in and comment on this? Do you want to come in and comment on this? On what you feel that would be the best way to move forward? Because we are talking about your police officers enforcing it. So we'd like to hear from you as well.
I had a brief moment of chance to look over it a little bit today, uh, the ordinance. Um, there's some language we would change in there. One of it stating that a code enforcement officer issue tickets, we'd like to just see it say, um, a person of authority from, you know, designated by the chief, such a thing like that. Uh, the parking, um, idea is actually a very, very, really, really good one enforcement in that, um, also, um, the designated language for, um, we believe, uh, security personnel is much needed in those larger units above X amount, you know? Uh, so looking into that. Um, there's some other things that we, we still looking at the ordinance and like to come up and put some more input in on it, too.
Okay. Any questions for the chief?
But preliminarily, we can, this would be good for us, that this would be a good foundation, you think?
To start out, yes, yeah. And it's like, like, um, Mr. Farrar said, we can make it a little bit broader, too, as well.
Okay.
Okay. You have a question?
Just a question. And, and I think Vice Mayor may, may have answered it, but I just want to make sure I'm clear. Oh, Commissioner, oh my goodness. Would this also apply, um, we're talking right now about the, uh, single, the apartments?
Multifamily.
Is this, yes, thank you, multifamily. Could this also extend to the townhomes as well? No?
I, no, they're, I think, considered in the zoning ordinance differently, and those are the definitions that we would base it on.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Chief, for your input. Bradley? So, so we're going to take amendments, suggestions...
Yes.
...and come back, will we come back to, um, back in September, right?
Yes. And so we'll come back with, um, what, again, those are the options as it relates to parking. I, I've heard you, there's some that, that are in your packet. Um, we'll come back with some refined language, and, um, we'll have a draft two before you and I have also heard Chief Tarpley's, what he wants. And so we can definitely make those changes and come back with a draft two for your, for your consideration.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thanks.
So, um, as long as you charge us to do that, and that's what you want us to do, we'll do it. Get it done.
What's the, what's the timeline to get this back to us? When will, and who will be responsible for meeting David? Will it be you, Chief, um, Bradley, and maybe Plu for, who'll be...
For which part?
To, to refine this language? And, and how soon will this get back to us so we can get another bite at it?
It'll come back to the commission on the September fifth city meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, with, with kind of those amendments that you were discussing.
But I, I mean, how soon will we, I'd like to have it in advance...
Before the meeting.
...the September fifth meeting. You know what I mean?
Yeah, so it would go with the, the packet publication, but we can certainly provide it and the amended language farther in advance.
Yeah.
Say, somewhere at or a little around midpoint in recess?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to give us time to draft, refine, and then circulate for review before we put it out into the...
Yeah, I just want to chew on it a little bit. Thank you.
And then if you want whatever additional changes, then we'll come back with another draft. That's our...
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Is that all you have for me?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
You can sit for a minute. So I think that's everything. So we're going to get ready to, we're going to get ready to go into closed session. So could I get a motion to go into closed session?
I, Commissioner Jennifer, move that the city commission enter closed session pursuant to Maryland General Provision, Section three dash three zero five B fourteen and three dash three zero five B seven and eight.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner, turn on your second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. We are now getting ready to go into closed session. Why don't you try to get your outfit to match your cup today?
Oh, no, I've been using it all day. You know, it's one of my favorite colors, is the orange.
Yeah, I like orange as well.
You got it, Kamala?
Uh-uh.
You got it?
You got it.
No, you got it.
You got it? You got it?
No, I don't know how to do it, so...
Oh, we...
You're on.
Yeah, I'm trying to... Okay, so I just have to find my notes.
You know, everywhere else I've worked, the turnings have...
No, no, we don't have to do anything. So, we are now back from our closed session, and it is nine thirty-three P.M. Do we have any announcements from the commission?
I do. I'd just like to remind everybody about National Night Out. What's that date, Chief Tarpley?
August sixth.
August sixth.
August sixth. Please come out. It's gonna be a great time. What are the hours again, Chief Tarpley? Come on up and talk about it.
Come on up and talk about it. This is your event.
This is his thing. This is baby.
Thank you, Chief Tarpley.
And thank you for bringing that up. Yes, we have been working diligently hard to procure some good vendors this year. I have a lot, a lot to offer. We've got some new vendors we're gonna showcase. We've got some new partnerships we have. It's gonna be full and packed of fun there. So, that's gonna be August the sixth, right here at the municipal center, from five to eight P.M. Yes.
And I've actually seen the info on social media.
Yes, we have advertising on all of our platforms and the signage, the banners around the city, and more signage is going up this week.
Okay, and that is Tuesday, August the sixth.
The sixth. Apparently, I was just told it's also the day of a special election, so when you get done voting, come on out to National Night Out.
Oh, special elections, right, on the sixth.
That's right, so we can...
That's interesting. Okay.
And I just have one more thing.
Sure, Commissioner Harcourt.
Yeah, and we just left closed session, and just a reminder, 'cause we won't be back, that we are looking for volunteers for our senior center. So, David, if you could talk a little bit about how people would be able to sign up to be a volunteer.
Or let...
Mr. Thomas, our new senior center director, he can tell you how to be a volunteer and what those shifts will look like. We're gonna need folks, so please decide to come on down.
Thank you. So, we are looking for four volunteers.
Get that mic.
We're looking for four volunteers to do two shifts, one from nine to one, and then from one, from twelve to four. And that gives us some overlap for our lunch duties, so anybody that you know that's interested can contact me directly. And my email address is thomas t at districtheights.org.
And David, do we have a generic email set up for him yet? What's that email? Is it senior director?
We have a, we have his standard email set up. When the center opens, all of the generic phone numbers, accounts, and things will go live. There is a webpage on the District Heights website for senior services. There is also a standardized volunteer form, which folks are encouraged to go online, navigate to, and fill out to become prospective volunteers.
Okay, and again, that's thomas t at districtheights.org?
And we'll have a flyer within this week, beginning of next week.
Okay, and those are four-hour shifts, five days a week?
Four days.
Four days a week. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other... So, since we're going, so we're going into August. So, August the sixth is National Night Out, and we also have our third annual back-to-school block party that we partner with InStyle Hair Grooming at Ritchie Station. And I do have both flyers in English and Spanish that we'll be putting out this evening and the rest of the time. So, looking for a great time. I mean, we are focusing on getting uniforms to three schools with low-income students, District Heights Elementary, North Forestville, and Long Fields Elementary School. That will be our focus. But we also will be giving out the clear backpacks with supplies. And so, a lot of fun, food, networking. So, we definitely gonna have Sheriff Carr, John Carr, there, and some other dignitaries that are partnering with us and sponsoring. So, we've had a great response on the sponsorship because they know this is a great need. And as we look at our third year at Ritchie Station, so the idea is expanding our reach on economic development and making a presence on an area that is not a municipality. So, we're just thinking about the bigger picture, but we want everybody to come out. And that is it for me. Do we have any other announcements?
Just one. What were the dates? What's the date?
Oh, so it's Sunday, August the eleventh, from one P.M. to five P.M., and I'll be sharing the information to everyone. Thank you. Any, any other questions or comments?
I do. Can I just ask, Mary, would, would people be able to donate or...
Yes, they will. If they wanted to donate school supplies, 'cause we're, we were tasked with only using clear backpacks. And so, that's the only thing that we're dealing with right now. But school supplies, you could actually, and you'll see the address, you can do drop-off supplies at the InStyle Salon, or we can have an area here that we will provide a big box for, for people to drop in. And then, we will need volunteers probably to help stuff those backpacks. So, 'cause we wanna be ready to just hand out when the time comes on the eleventh.
And I didn't know if Commissioner Jennifer had one more, had some.
I did, one more.
I wanted to just quickly ask a question for Chief Tarpley. I have had a number of residents that have inquired about the volunteerism for National Night Out and wanted to ask if there were still some opportunities for that.
Most certainly, most certainly. If they are registered to, have taken the class to do voter registration, we need some assistance at our registration table. Also, our food service area's gonna need some help, and our moon bounce service is gonna need some help. So, they can reach out to the police department and we can set them up with getting registered to be a volunteer with us.
Can you give us the information, please, for them to reach out to you, sir?
Yes, they can email police two thousand at districtheights.org, or give us a call, and we'll be able to take care of that.
Thank you.
Any...
One thing, and this is, since we're going on recess, I wanna just get this out. We've been working closely with Dr. Kenneth Harris from the Prince George's County Public School System, and Dr. Walters over at District Heights Elementary. We are building a little coalition to start a community garden and basically like a little edible forest over there. We're building a great coalition. It's very exciting. We're gonna need volunteer... We're gonna need volunteers, so please keep that on your radar. The kids are really excited. We got some parents, but we're gonna need a lot of community participation to get this garden up and to keep it maintained, particularly through the summers. We're gonna, it's gonna start off small, but we're hoping to get it started. And then we wanna spread it to some other community schools in the area. So just keep that on your radar. We really wanna get our community more involved with volunteering and more of a village aspect to tie in our seniors, our middle-aged, all ages together, to be more involved with our children, so that we can stop them and get them involved at an early age to stop this, this violence from going on in their teen years. It's a disconnect, and that disconnect is that we're, we're losing them at their most critical developmental ages, and that's that young age between 5, 6, 7, those elementary ages. By the time they get to middle school, if we don't catch them early, we lose them. So it's up to us to start volunteering. We can't just sit around and complain and be angry and say, you know, these kids, we gotta, we gotta spend a few hours with them, and we need your wisdom. So just keep that on your radar. Any, any opportunity to volunteer with these kids, please come and give a little bit, a half hour, it really makes a difference in, in the lives of the child. So thank you.
And I'm sure Dr. Harris will be speaking on that, even at the block party, because he's gonna be there as well.
Great.
Yeah, yeah. And also, we'll be giving out 300 boxes of food at that event, free food at that event as well. We're trying to cover all bases to get people to come out. Oh, okay. Oh, and so, and David, you can probably chime in if you know better, but American Bloom, they were here?
Yes, I'm happy to speak to that. America and Bloom completed their first visit today. I have received very positive feedback from those who have participated for the city's first outing in this initiative. So for the benefit of the public and a reminder to the commission, this is a community beautification effort that was really, you know, spearheaded and brought to our attention by the commission, particularly Commissioner Harcourt. The city signed on as an American and Bloom member. What you get as a full member is a lot of specific advice, specialized expert advice from horticulturists from across the country, as well as a two-day in-person visit and inventory and report from that inventory that you can then take for the rest of the year to work on. So our visit, our very first visit, has been completed. We are eagerly expecting our report, and we are sending two staff members, our landscaper and our assistant director of public works, to the 2024 Amer... ...work that they put into making these two days successful.
Thank you for that. More growth, beautification, very important. Okay, with that, I am pleased to announce the commission is going into an August recess and will return... I'm sorry?
I, I have two housekeeping items.
Sure.
And then I have a draft motion for the ordinance that I pass out.
Oh, okay, okay.
The housekeeping items is that there were two critical items that the commission took up at the last of things, are, per your rules, introduced and dealt with in city meetings. They will be back on the agenda for September 5th. And with that, I will go get the printed draft motion.
Okay. We're gonna be on overload on September 5th.
Those are always long ones. Get your sleep.
Take your vitamins.
I'll take my vitamins.
No, sir.
Start it earlier. He said start it earlier. I guess we could. We probably need to. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
The motion being passed out will be entered into the published record for the benefit of the public.
Oh, okay. So, because they're listed on here, and so, are we ready for this motion on item 5 repeal and reenactment?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Harcourt?
Yes, I can take that. I move that the city commission suspend the rules.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Thomas, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. Okay. And then the next motion? Who wants to take the next?
I can take that also.
Okay.
I move that the city commission approve DH 2024-04 repeal and reenactment of Section 10-31 provided as attachment 1 to the July 23rd, 2024 staff report as an emergency ordinance within October 1, 2024 sunset.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Jennifer, second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero, motion.
You have to vote, pursuant to...
Aye. Four, zero. Okay, so are we now ready to get a motion to go on recess? I don't know if that's me. So, so the commission is going into an August recess and will return on September the 5th, 2024 city meeting. Is there a motion?
Yes.
To adjourn?
Yes. I, Commissioner Jennifer, move that we adjourn the meeting for recess for the month of August for a return date of September the 5th of 2024.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Thomas, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Commissioner Harcourt, motion to adjourn.
Could I get a second?
Commissioner Jennifer, second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero. Meeting has been adjourned.